I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way. I don't like you guys. I'm trying to stay out of the way.
I'd like to welcome everybody out this evening. Welcome everyone to the Barnstable Town Council meeting for June 15, 2023. I do want to make a quick announcement in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting. If so, please make your presence known. Okay, not seeing any. Roll call, please.
Councillors. Atslis.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Colum.
Here.
Kuzak. Rapgrsetti. Levec.
Here.
Ludke. Mendez.
Here.
Neary. Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Yep, Stein, thank you.
Thank you. If you can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. At this point in time, I'd like to make a quick presentation. Sure, you can come right up. How are you? Good to see you. That's exciting, I like that. Very good. Well, this is to commemorate Barnstable Land Trust, 40 years, 40 years of service and partnership with the town of Barnstable, so I just wanted to read out this proclamation. Barnstable Land Trust is a community-supported nonprofit whose mission is to preserve the natural resources and special places in the town of Barnstable and nearby areas for present and future generations, whereas Barnstable Land Trust has conserved over 1,100 acres and supported the town in protecting over 11,000 more since 1983. Whereas Barnstable Land Trust celebrates the power of protected lands to support healthy people, healthy communities, a healthy economy, and a healthy environment, whereas Barnstable Land Trust prioritizes community investment and conservation that reflect the values and priorities of a strongly connected community, whereas Barnstable Land Trust is a recognized local, statewide, and regional leader in collaborative land conservation stewardship, community engagement, and advocacy for our natural and cultural resources, whereas Barnstable Land Trust welcomes everyone to enjoy the diversity of culture, cultural and natural assets of its properties through programs, hiking paths, trail guides, and special initiatives which are accessible to those who live, work, play, and visit here. Whereas Barnstable Land Trust is celebrating its 40th anniversary this year by renewing its commitment to lasting results by ensuring conservation benefits and organizational excellence endures beyond our lifetimes. We, the Barnstable Town Councillors, do hereby proclaim July 11, 2023, which is your annual meeting, and the town of Barnstable as Barnstable Land Trust Day, and we urge all people to join us in this special observance. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Barnstable Town Council does hereby congratulate Barnstable Land Trust on their 40th anniversary and witness, whereas I, Matthew P. Levec, President of the Barnstable Town Council, do hereby to set my hand and cause the official seal of the town of Barnstable to be affixed this day, June 15, 2023. Thank you. So, just want to say thank you. And I want to recognize, hold on. And, hold on a sec, I just want to say thank you to Janet Milkman, the current Director, and 1985 to 2016, I think it was, Jack, 15, 16, Jackie Barton, who was the Director for many, many years and really got this whole thing started. So, I actually welcome you to stay if you'd like to say anything, the microphone can be yours.
And I'm going to go back and sit down. So I just want to say that none of this would have been possible had the selectmen then in 1981 adopted an open space policy. That was Gloria Rudman, Al Buckler, and John Clem. And then in 1983, the Conservation Commission adopted an open space plan. And still with us today are Mark Robinson and Lindsay Council, they were Howard Woolard, they were among the ones who created that open space plan. And way, way, way in the back, there was a diagram, and it said, "Form Private Land Conservation Trust." They called a meeting, the people that showed up nominated one another for officers, and off they went. Two years later, they hired me. And of course, yeah, I found my passion. What could be better than to preserve the special places in the place where you live? And I had the support, we had the support at the land trust, of the community. They never failed us when we asked for help with preserving open space. Major open space package in 1985, $17.1 million. 20-year bond, everybody said, you know, do it, Crocker Neck was included in that. And kind of moving forward, the land bank and then the Community Preservation Act. So that tells you the kind of commitment that's here in the community to preserve open space. And if it wasn't for that, Barnstable Land Trust would have never been able to do what it did, and Janet couldn't do what she's doing now. And I thank you, Janet, for stepping into my shoes and taking off with the Barnstable Land Trust and hope that you'll have another 30 years at the helm. Thanks.
Thank you. And again, congratulations. I open up to the floor for the council. If anybody would like to say anything.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levec. And congratulations to the Barnstable Land Trust. I just wanted to make it part of the record that Jackie Barton served as a town councillor how many years ago? In the beginning. In the beginning. And also served as council president, so she was able to contribute to our town in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Anybody else? Councilor Schnep, please.
Again, I'm glad for that history. It's wonderful to hear about how something can start with a few passionate individuals and can really take hold and make such a difference in our community. I can't say enough about how often I get to enjoy properties that have been conserved by the Barnstable Land Trust and all the innovative ways that you've been able to not necessarily own the land but provide restrictions and keep land protected. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Schnep. Anybody else like to say anything? Left or right? Okay. Thank you again and congratulations. With that, now it would be time for public comment. If anybody in the room here would like to participate in public comment, please come to the front. You'd have three minutes and please sign in and just state your name, please. Thank you.
Like this is a regular occurrence for me.
Make sure that green light is on in your microphone.
It is on. I have to move it up because I'm tall.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rhodes. I am a resident of Falmouth. I work in Hyannis, and I am the current President of the NAACP for the Cape Cod Branch. I also serve as Treasurer for the Zion Union Heritage Museum. My comments here are to support the decision of our town to raise the Juneteenth flag. Juneteenth is a significant and meaningful commemoration of the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in the United States. By raising Juneteenth flag, our town would be acknowledging and honoring the struggles, resilience, and contributions of African-Americans throughout history and in light of the recent events that have occurred in this town. Raising the Juneteenth flag demonstrates the town's commitment to equality, justice, and inclusivity for all members of our community. It sends a powerful message that we recognize the importance of confronting our nation's history of slavery and systemic racism, and that we are dedicated to promoting understanding, empathy, and unity among our residents. The act of raising the Juneteenth flag also creates an opportunity for education dialogue within our community. It encourages open conversations about the impact of slavery and the ongoing fight for racial equality. By fostering awareness and understanding, we can work together towards a more inclusive and equitable society. Moreover, raising the Juneteenth flag shows solidarity with the African-American community and supports our efforts to celebrate and commemorate a significant moment in history. It demonstrates that we stand together in recognizing their heritage, culture, and achievements, and that we are committed to fostering an environment where everyone feels valued, respected, and represented. Raising the Juneteenth flag is a powerful and meaningful gesture that promotes unity, understanding, and equality. It showcases our town's commitment to acknowledging the past, learning from it, and creating a more inclusive future for all members of our community. To add from my personal story, I'm the fourth generation living on Cape Cod. My father's mother's father, we only have one picture of him. The picture is about 1910, 1911. We have no idea how old he is, when his birthday is. He is somebody who was released because of the Emancipation Proclamation. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
My name is Mary Ann Barboza. Well, I truly appreciate what the town is doing for Juneteenth. Unfortunately, we, most of us, have to go off Cape to celebrate Juneteenth, hoping next year we can have something here. I need to get my water, hold on.
It's taken up your three minutes, so, Mary Ann.
I still got to talk. I promise, one day I'm going to be shy, I'm working on it. Anyway, while I can appreciate that, but we all know, and I don't have to bring up the events earlier this month, it angered a lot of people, but it does confirm what I had been coming for these boards to talk about as far as these establishments and how there's a double standard in this town, and I know we all know what I'm talking about. I don't want to trade our ads, let's just leave it at that. Okay, and if you don't know about it, look online. And unfortunately, there is, it's reached way outside the state. Cape Cod, the way, there was one place where it had over 40,000 views, and comments that were being made is, this is almost like Clanville. Now, what bothers me with that is we know that's not true, but I think with the establishments, I can't dispute that. And I'm not saying it's not Clanville to make the white people in town feel better. I'm saying that because people of color, this isn't yesteryear. And if it was Clanville, we're not going to run and go into the beds, that's obvious. Okay? What people had to do back then, they had to do. So, no, it's not. And it makes it sound like everybody is like some of the people in these establishments. But most neighbors, most white people and everyday citizens actually love each other, and we really care for each other. So, we're not living in Clanville. But to let what happened, if you read the comments from outside this state and people who have visited here, that's their feeling about it. And what bothers me is what I had planned to do with that one establishment has to now go on hold because I don't want them to really look at us. And if you think I'm playing, go read the comments. This went well, made it well outside, but all of these establishments are doing it. And I did ask, I want this to get on the agenda, because every board in this town, whether it's the Board of Health, the Licensing, every board, nothing we could do about it. If they didn't say something racial, then, oh, well, you're on your own. Well, if they're coming into this town, they're getting licensed, they're getting permission to be here, then they should be fine to be here. And I'm not talking about from high school students or young people who haven't learned how to treat people.
30 seconds.
Okay, I understand that, and I'm going to hurry. But we have got to start understanding that people of color, we're living in two separate worlds on this Cape. Because, and this is the last thing I'm going to say about it, but I need you to understand. Like someone said, "Oh, he was a coward, I would have punched him." Well, when a white man is in someone's face fighting, he's only thinking about the man in front of him. When it's a man of color who's being confronted and has to stand up for himself, he's thinking, "Who can bail me out tonight?" Because he's not only dealing with the man in front of him, he's dealing with what he has to go through. So, this needs to get on the agenda, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barboza.
My name is Matthew Watson.
Just make sure you speak into the microphone if you can, please. I want to make sure we hear you.
Yes, my name is Matthew Watson. I am here on a matter regarding a problem rental property and the potential liability the town has come under because of their actions. I am a Barnstable resident. I live only a few blocks from here on 84 Hampshire Avenue, stone's throw, if you will. For the last two years, I have endured, and my family has endured, criminal harassment and going to...
Speak up a little, please.
You might, you might be, just if you want to...
Criminal harassment I and several other neighbors have had to endure started as a simple harassment based on race, ethnicity, and physical disability. But I've ballooned into a situation where the town has become culpable in the criminal harassment, even consciously or unconsciously aiding and abetting this harassment itself. The evidence I was going to present is voluminous and comprehensive. This has been going on for two years and includes the Town of Barnstable Administration Offices, Barnstable Police Department, the Hyannis Fire Department. Documentation is comprised of audio/video surveillance, Barnstable Police Department reports, Hyannis Fire Department reports, Town of Barnstable Administration Office reports, Freedom of Information Act documents from the Town of Barnstable and the Barnstable Police Department. My goal in attendance meeting tonight was not, excuse me, was to bring to light the situation and expose the town's legal liability so that a proper internal investigation can be conducted focused on the original perpetrators who continually report false crimes to purposely elicit an armed response from the town. There's an activity called swatting, where the purpose is to draw out a SWAT team response by over-exaggerating a police report. Repeatedly, there is a call to these agencies with the most egregious a call to the town manager's office and threatening to burn down a town official's house. Under the guise that they were me, someone within your department reported to the anonymous caller that I had called a second time in as many months to make an attempt to meet with the town manager at 8:47 a.m., June 3, 2022. By 11:30 a.m., the anonymous caller had contacted the very same phone number with the threat, and these four administrators, excuse me, four administrators including the town manager recklessly assumed it was the same person. How does that happen? At 4:17 p.m., while on the phone with the civil rights liaison from the Barnstable Police Department, Officer Morrison, trying to work out the civil rights issue I had with my neighbor, the Barnstable Police Department were also at my door responding to the earlier anonymous threat. Yes, this really happened, and it's not the first time. Honestly, none of your departments have taken the time to look over all the evidence and therefore do not understand the scope of the circumstances and subsequently have discounted it to a low-level civil matter. As the Police Department, Fire Department, and Town Administration Officers are culpable in this matter, I cannot present my case with him, excuse me, with them as they would be investigated themselves, although I have appealed to them on several different occasions in the last two years to resolve this. Two years, almost to the day. I repeat, my goal of attending this meeting tonight was only to bring the investigation and pique the town's interest in heading off a civil rights lawsuit and criminal proceedings by the claims being presented to an Article III federal court in Boston, pursuing security bonds and requesting their active oath of office to be presented and hold them accountable to their actions.
30 seconds, please.
I have with me several items, and I've also forwarded a little bit more information to Mr. Mendez earlier today. I welcome you to contact me and investigate this matter, and we can both solve each other's problems. I'm not here to win the town to court. I'm not here to fight. I'm here for an equitable solution for both of us. If you investigate this matter, we both can live peacefully.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Sarah, is there anybody that would like to participate remotely?
Yes, we do. Mr. Ail, if you could unmute, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Councillors. I'm John Ail. Two days ago, a neighbor asked me about item 203 in tonight's new business, probably because I'm a retired lawyer. Now, I'm no expert on Massachusetts zoning law, and I realize that you will not be debating or voting on this matter this evening, but after a quick look, I think there are more matters at stake that you should consider than the explanatory memorandum describes. The concept sounds simple, just drop the required vote to approve a regulatory agreement with zoning waivers from two-thirds to a simple majority, when a state statute that took effect in 2021 would allow you to rezone the property by majority vote. But as often is the case, the devil's in the details. First, the state law allows a majority vote only when an eligible location, quote-unquote, is involved. Without getting into the weeds and being too wonky here, the definition of that term is very loose. When the State Executive Office for Housing and Economic Development issued guidance, it couldn't even say who makes that determination. I suspect that if a project is so controversial that dropping the required vote from nine councillors to seven makes a difference, it's going to be followed quickly by a court challenge on whether the standard to lower the vote was actually met. That makes me question the fiscal note saying that there's no fiscal impact. Second, although the memo in the agenda correctly states that the ordinance would apply only when you could approve a rezoning by a majority vote, the statute lets you do so only if the rezoning is, quote, "of right." That is, any owner of the property will have the right to build whatever the change allows, not just the developer who signs a regulatory agreement. It then would not need the regulatory agreement at all, and the town would not get the benefits. Third, the memo does not address the protest provision of the new state law. If owners of 50% of the acreage within 300 feet lodge a protest, the vote goes back to the two-thirds. Again, if the project is controversial enough, the two votes are going to make a difference, it very well may attract a formal protest, moving the vote back to two-thirds. Amending the regulatory agreement ordinance could just wind up being much ado about nothing if it turns out it goes back to a two-thirds vote anyway. All I'm saying this evening is that when you consider this item, and you should consider it between now and when it takes up a second reading, please look carefully into whether dropping the required vote for regulatory agreements will ever be practical, whether it will be costless, as the fiscal note suggests, and whether it's worth all the hassle. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ail. Is there anybody else?
That's all for public comment, please.
Thank you very much, Sarah. And now it would be time for response from the council to public comment. Looking to my right, would anybody like to respond to my right? Councilor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment especially on our first three speakers, and I'm glad that you all came this evening, glad that we could take a step in the right direction by, I hope, approving the resolve that we have tonight and being able to raise the Juneteenth flag at the town hall, knowing that that is really only a step in the right direction, not a comprehensive way of correcting problems that have been with us for years, decades, centuries. And I think we are, we've made some steps in other programmatic things to start addressing this, but it's going to be a journey, and we need your continued participation in that. Mr. Watson, I don't really know the grievances that you bring before us, but I give you my confidence that if the matter needs to be investigated, it will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Schnep. Anybody else to my right? Councilor Mendez, please.
Thank you, President Levec. Mrs. Barboza, we both grew up here, been here for generations, so we know what it's like to have to parallel two worlds. We know what it's like to have one step in our culture and the other in another culture. So, I'm very empathetic to what you said, because I understand probably better than most do in this room right now. A lot of people in the majority don't realize that's how we have to live our daily lives. It's not something we choose to do, it's something we have to do for survival. So, I'm very empathetic to what you said. And, Mr. Watson, I did receive your email today, and like I told you I would do, I forwarded it to the relevant departments that should look at it, that's our process. But this, I will promise you, at least on my behalf, and I'm pretty confident saying about this... and I'm pretty confident saying about this, counsel, if there's any malfeasance or anything going on, we won't stand for that. So your matter's being looked into.
Thank you, Counselor Mendez. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I want to say to Lynn and to Mary Ann, thank you so much for raising the issue of Juneteenth, and I absolutely support raising that flag. I also want to say to Mrs. Barboza, I'm glad you're not shy, because you raised some children who came forward back in 2016, 2017, immediately met with the Barnstable Police to set up Barnstable Unity Day, still going to this day. So I thank you for not being shy and for raising children who are strong advocates. Mr. Watson, I am familiar with what swatting is, and if anything you say is true, and again, I don't know the details, I'm just sickened by it, and it needs to stop, and the person responsible needs to pay for what they've done to you, and I'm very sorry for that. Mr. Ail, thank you for your comments regarding item number 203, and thank you for giving us something to think about as we approach that item coming up on our agenda. And as always, thank you to everyone who comes to comment. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Anybody else? I'd just like to say thank you for coming, and you know, the Juneteenth flag is symbolic, but as far as really addressing things that need to be addressed and the things that we've been working on, which we've talked many times about, again, it's a symbolic gesture. I think that what is, can connect and make people have a confidence that this too is their community, this too is their country, and so I would support it. And it's a federal holiday, so that's mostly important, is that this is not just a fly-by-night type of thing. It is something that has been passed by a legislature. And so, and that's how it's been presented in the item as well. So, yeah, so we'll move forward. And then also, as well as the other, I don't, Mr. Watson, I don't know this case. Obviously, we will look into it. I know that those in this room, the directors, our administration, take these things very seriously, and I can guarantee you that this will be looked at in a thorough manner moving forward. And Mary Ann, it's always good to see you and appreciate your input, and I've learned a lot from you over the years, and I continue to, again, encourage you to come and speak anytime and educate us about your point of view. So I appreciate that. And as far as Mr. Ail goes, we'll take all these things into consideration. I wrote these questions down, and it's something I will personally ask our legal department in regards to that item. Anything else? Okay, then I would close public comment, and let's move on to the town manager communications. The town manager report has been pre-recorded and is available to town council and the public. The report will be prepared in written form and posted on the town manager's website as in the past. The town manager and staff will be available to answer any questions regarding the report as presented, the town manager communication for the period of June 2 through June 15, included an update on: One, the budget action calendar. Two, congratulations to Ann Quirk for receiving the Town Clerk of the Year Award. If she was here, we would give her a standing ovation. Three, announcement of second public hearing on town manager amended regulations for grant of location of wireless technology. Four, an update on green burial regulations. Five, Town of Barnstable's recognition as a tree city. Six, update on beach operations. Seven, beach raking update. Eight, Cape and Islands Wastewater Trust Fund Board meeting update. Nine, update on proposed Title V and watershed permit regulations. Ten, update from Kelly Colopy regarding water resource management. And so at this point in time, those are the items. And at this point in time, does any of the council have questions for Town Manager Ails, who's not in the room, but Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn is? And any questions? Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. It says in number eight, we're talking about the Cape and Islands Wastewater Trust Fund Board. Can we move a letter forward, and can we say, can we come back next meeting with a letter?
A letter in regards to?
It's supporting the trust providing 25% principal subsidies? What's the process?
The process in a letter, first of all, Assistant Town Manager, are you prepared to speak to this by any chance? Okay, that sounds good, just to make sure.
No, we can wait. We can wait.
No, no, it's okay. I just, I can probably speak to this a little bit. I think the support is there from the leadership moving forward. I trust that mark, because it really is... So a letter to the board or a letter to the legislature?
To the legislature.
Yeah, we could do that. You mean like senators here, or the statehouse? What do you talk, where you want the letter addressed to? I guess that's what I'm asking.
It's right in the memo, number eight.
Sure.
Okay, so a letter to the legislative body from, they're looking for, the board is requesting that the legislative body from each town on the Cape provide a supportive letter for this request.
Right. Yes, I would support doing that.
Okay.
And we can have it.
For the next meeting, you want?
Well, I can do it. We don't have to wait till the next meeting. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying we're taking a vote. It's not what I'm saying, actually.
Okay. Okay, so next meeting, we will have one to vote?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Anything else? Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President. I bet Director Jenkins could answer these questions. It has to do with item number five, our Arbor Day being recognized as a tree city. And two questions. One, what's the status of our planting trees? I know there was, we've received a nice amount of funds or will be, and how is that proceeding? And two, I'm glad that we are being recognized for the planting and care of trees, but I sometimes wonder if we might take another step and prevent the sometimes slaughter of our trees in town. And are there any ways that the council could maybe look into that going forward?
By all means, Director Jenkins.
Thank you. President Levesque, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, and I do want to recognize the great work of Assistant Director Maldonado, together with our tree warden, Andy Bernard, to reestablish us as a tree city and participate in that Arbor Day celebration. They've done a great job, especially engaging our kids and youth in the importance of trees to our environment for many reasons. The Green in the Gateway Cities Project, which Ms. Maldonado presented on, I believe, at the last meeting, is progressing. We put a bid out for landscape contractors to help plant the trees, and we got two folks who are interested in bidding, so that process continues. We do, I believe, are close to having that website up and running and are in the process of hiring a project manager funded through that grant for that project. So you should start to see that roll out, at least the ability for people to sign up, and the advertisement coming out for those trees here very soon. Relative to the, you know, the potential clearcutting or other types of regulations, you know, this has certainly become an issue. You know, it's been an issue in our community for many years. We were certainly mindful of towns like Eastham. I believe they had a tree clearing ordinance on their latest warrant at town meetings. So we are trying to look at best practices and see what's working and not working in other communities, noting that, you know, again, this sort of not just preservation of our environment, but the enhancement of the environment as well is clearly a key priority going forward. Thank you.
Counselor, I'm sorry. Looking to my right, Madam Vice Chair, do you have a question?
I do. If I could ask you again, Elizabeth, a question. You know, I don't know if this is what Counselor Schnep was referring to, but you know, the wholesale slaughter of the trees is by Eversource, where they come carve out the very center of the most beautiful big old trees that we have. And I don't know what that looks like, what a conversation with them looks like about that. I know they just maintain that they're keeping the lines clear, but sometimes they do everything but chop the tree down. It's really sad. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to have a discussion with them at all about that. I realize they operate under a different provenance and everything, but in kind of the spirit of being a good community partner, when we ask them to, you know, not use chemicals to keep things clear, you know, they just don't seem to be wanting to have conversations like this. And I think it's important that we actually have them, even if they're difficult.
Yeah, and you know, I do have to say, we do have a history of working with Eversource, you know, particularly on Route 6A relative to tree removals where they're required to apply for scenic road permission for that. So folks in my office who work in historic preservation, again, together with the tree warden, have tried to keep an open dialogue with Eversource, at least on roadways where we have jurisdiction, and we know that tree canopy and preserving that tree canopy is important, you know, to the overall character of those areas, in addition to the many different reasons why trees are important.
Did that answer your question, Counselor Schnep?
Yes.
Okay, so make sure. And any other comments, questions on the right? Looking to my left, Counselor Attles, please.
Thank you. Director Jenkins, this is an education for me. The tree clearing ordinance that you referred to, I think it was Eastham, is that for private property?
It's correct.
Okay.
Yep. So to limit the taking of trees on private property, or at least to establish a review process wherein typically trees of a certain caliber at least require some sort of review process prior to clearing. And then, you know, that's sort of one approach, and then certainly there are, you know, what I think of as cut-fill ordinances. So when somebody is doing sort of pre-development and large-scale clearing of lots requiring permitting associated with that as well. And that's something that will also, you know, I think, start to get additional scrutiny as we enhance our stormwater management regulations as well.
Okay, thank you, because I find that we have a fair amount of armchair environmentalists who are walking contradictions, because in one hand, they're worried about the environment; on the other hand, they're clearcutting their properties to put up showcase homes, and there seems to be no limit to what they're taking down. And if they're truly concerned about the environment, you would think they would do things otherwise. So, yeah, I think looking at an ordinance like this would certainly be pretty important.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly a regulatory gap. I mean, we have jurisdiction in wetland buffers, scenic roads, things like that, but the scope of that is fairly limited when it comes to, you know, protecting natural resources.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Looking to my left. Okay, all right, moving on from Town Manager Communications. Oh, I'm sorry, Paulie, I have a question.
More comment, Mr. President. I did enjoy viewing Kelly's report or presentation on the Water Resource Management. I think it's a great resource, and I'd like to maybe suggest that we bring that back to the council meeting. I often don't have time to review these things before the meeting, and then it's also difficult to kind of recall what might be in that report that might be worthy of a question during the meeting. So again, I understand the desire to kind of keep our meetings tight and efficient, and I think this works fine with the town manager's report, but I think some of these presentations are really great, and I'd hate to lose that opportunity to have them out there in the public in a way that we can also have further discussion.
Okay. I appreciate that feedback. It's valuable. This is a new thing, and that's, I think, when we introduced it, I at-will want, need the feedback. Vice President Cullum and I, again, when we introduced it, was to make that concise, but at the same time, we can definitely make adjustments moving forward. Just to follow up with that, though, was that the only presentation that you think that we should maybe bring back to the council? Was there any other type of?
Well, I think the LCP, I mean, the two rotating presentations, which is the local comprehensive plan and the water resource, I think they're just very important initiatives that we're doing, and I would hope that we would kind of keep that in our public conversation.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. And like you said, Counselor Starr, we'll work on that letter, and we'll have that before the council the next meeting. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Jenkins. Town Manager Ails, and Town Manager Ails is here. I don't want to leave the opportunity. Does anybody else want to, anything? No? Okay. Actually, maybe, Mark, real quick, just, it is the town manager report, and just to give you the thing, it is your birthday, so I would remiss if we didn't sing you "Happy Birthday." So, "Happy Birthday to you, Happy Birthday to you, Happy Birthday, dear Mark, Happy Birthday to you." And I always enjoy doing that, too, because Counselor Clark has got a great harmonizing ability, so it sounds really nice. Thank you. So, happy birthday, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
He's just trying to one-up me because he knows I'm funnier than he is when I run a meeting.
That's right.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
You use the talents and gifts you have to, you know, any resources that you have, offer them to the public. So that being said, again, Town Manager Communications is now closed, and thank you for everybody who participated in that. And Vice President Cullum, Madam Vice Chair, if you could please help me act on the minutes.
Yes, I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was, where are my minutes? Yeah, June 1, 2023. How could I forget?
Seconds.
First and second. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. If you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying "aye"? And "I would abstain," because I wasn't present.
I would abstain as well.
Now, we don't have enough to vote. So maybe we can, do I have to abstain? Okay, so I would vote yes. I did obviously read the minutes, so I would, can I change my vote? Let's do another one, maybe? If you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying "aye," if you feel so comfortable, and those, any nays, abstentions, please raise your hand. Two abstentions. Thank you. And now it's time for Town Manager Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Looking to my right, anybody announcements, comments? Looking to my left, any announcements? There's always something from Centerville. Counselor Attles, please.
So I just wanted to comment on what's become a hot-button issue on some local social media sites about the beach raking. I just received an update right when the meeting started. Kudo, thank you to town staff, Nina Coleman, the town manager's office, and others with submitting an interim request for beach raking at Craigville and Cobles Beaches. So, you know, the town is working aggressively to be able to do some kind of raking to, you know, keep the beaches safe and clean. It's not being ignored. It's being addressed aggressively, has been since April, and it looks like we're getting somewhere, and we do have to submit this request by July 15, and it looks like that that is going to happen. So to anyone in the public that's listening, you know, this is moving forward, and there's been some progress. So we're staying on top of this, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Attles. Vice President Cullum?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Dan Santos for coming to the Civic Association meeting in Hyannis and explaining what the town has done to remediate PFAS, what the situation is, what the standards are that we're forced to meet, why it's important, and fielding a million questions from a bunch of concerned people. It was really worthwhile, I think, for everyone involved, so thank you for doing that.
Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. I should make a note that Amanda Converse was named the Mercy Otis Warren Cape Cod Woman of the Year. So she has done a lot of work in the village of Hyannis and for our town, and for that, she was recognized last night on Flag Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. If you had mentioned it, I would have, so that's great. Thank you. Encourage a resident of Centerville, so. Congratulations, a resident of Centerville, so. Oh, that's right. I'm thinking of her mom. Yeah, that's right. Counselor Schnep, did you have anything else? Any other announcement? Okay. And I also want to just congratulate all the high school graduates in Barnstable High School, and just say congratulations and good luck moving forward, and all the good work being done there. And, again, just wanted to recognize that. I think just watching the festivities take place, all the social media posts of all the celebrations, and we really appreciate it post-COVID, that it's able to take place. My oldest son was a graduate in 2020. So since then, anything that we're able to do for them and for those children to be recognized for all their efforts to make their high school experience something special, it's worthy of celebrating. So just want to recognize that. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, moving forward, that would end that part. And going into the orders of the day, at this point in time, I'm just going to take a few items out of order if I could, and not to delay the school budget any more than needed. But since we are recognizing the Barnstable Land Trust, I thought moving their items so that they could leave a little sooner than later would be appropriate. So Counselor Schnep, please. I'm sorry, Counselor Starr, please. Item number 2023-208. I'm sorry, I should have gave you a warning. I apologize.
Okay, I got it. This is item 2023-208. Approving a conservation restriction on 2.3 acres of land on Commerce Road in Barnstable Village between Barnstable Land Trust, who's the grantor, and the town of Barnstable, who is the grantee. This is new business, but it may be acted upon by a majority vote.
Second.
First and a second, and Director Milkman with the rationale, please. Just press the button, the green, so you're glowing.
Good evening, Janet Milkman, Executive Director, Barnstable Land Trust. Thank you, first of all, for the wonderful proclamation. We're really grateful for that recognition. It means a lot to us. And thank you for moving this up. I promise it'll be brief. You've already heard about this project once. There are three conservation restrictions that we're asking for your approval on, but it's all part of the same project. It is three parcels on Commerce Road. The first one that was just described is a... Is the parcel that Barnstable Land Trust is purchasing for conservation, and the town is going to hold the conservation restriction. That's what we're asking for approval for. The other two are simply conservation restrictions that are being donated to Barnstable Land Trust. Altogether, it's a little over five acres. It's the final piece of a decades-long effort working with the Brazelton family and the Lowell family before them to conserve 40 acres of land, to conserve a really large expanse, beautiful view to Barnstable Harbor, and one of the last examples of sandplain, grassland, and native little blue stem, and beautiful, beautiful, open space that's visible for all of the walkers who do the Millway-Commerce Road loop. So in December, the council approved the appropriation for the community preservation funds that are a part of this project. Now we're asking for approval for the conservation restriction.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any council discussion in regards to that? Any council discussion? Okay. Then please, if you could, raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous. Counselor Starr, if you'd like to move on to the next item?
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. -- thank you, President Levesque. This is item 2023-209. Approving a conservation restriction on 1.2 acres of land on Commerce Road in Barnstable Village between Catherine Bowles Brazelton, trustee of the Catherine Bowles Brazelton 2022 Revocable Trust, and Barnstable Land Trust. It's new business, but it may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Second.
First and a second. Back to you, Director Milkman, for the rationale.
Again, this is the first piece, the conservation restriction that's being donated to Barnstable Land Trust, directly abutting the piece that you just approved the conservation restriction on.
Thank you. Any council discussion in regards to this item? Not seeing any, move to a vote. And if you could please raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
And leave that unanimous as well. Counselor Starr, if you could please, one more.
One more. Thank you. This is item 2023-210. Approving a conservation restriction on 1.4 acres of land on Commerce Road in Barnstable Village between Thomas B. Brazelton III and Barnstable Land Trust. This is also new business, may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Second.
First and a second. Anything else you'd like to present?
Just want to say thank you to the Town Attorney's Office for all of their help. This was a very long process, made more difficult by some delays at the state. So we're really grateful for that partnership.
Thank you. Any further discussion at the council? Counselor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Barnstable Land Trust for all of its effort to, you know, accumulate and preserve this land in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving to a vote, if you could raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Three in a row. Thank you so much. Thanks for everything. Director, Counselor Barton, thank you for your presence here as well, as always. Good to see you. Okay, at this point in time, we're going to do our first of new business, I'm sorry, old business. So while the, I welcome the school department up to make a presentation on the school budget, I would say let's take a five-minute break. Thank you. Counselors, if we could find our seats, please. We're going to begin, get back to our agenda. We have one more item from our operating budget that needs to be addressed, or presented, I should say. So I just wanted to welcome Superintendent Ahern here. And if you want to do the introduction, or we also have finance, School Finance Director Chris Dwellie with us as well. Welcome, so. Go ahead.
Thank you for having us, President Levesque and Vice President Cullum. Sarah Ahern, Superintendent, and Chris Dwellie are Deputy Finance Director. So we're here to present the School Department FY24 operating budget. I have a brief presentation to set the stage for the council, and also the community, too, as well, in terms of our budget request. This budget was passed by the school committee on March 15th after their budget hearing. And I want to, I guess, recognize for the community that I recognize that it is a large ask with respect to the percent increase, larger than what is typically seen. But I think over the past couple of months, there's been some education, both at the school committee level and then here with the council, with respect to how state funding is really shifting and changing in response to our demographics in order to support teaching and learning. In terms of our major budget drivers, with respect to anything that we might call a level service budget, the wages through collective bargaining agreements really is our biggest expense in terms of salaries for teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, bus drivers, et cetera. As you might imagine, we're also experiencing inflationary pressures on costs such as fuel, facilities maintenance, software licenses, and supplies. And then we have experienced an increase in our multilingual learners. And so we are required, as we should, it's our moral obligation, too, to provide services to families that are translated and interpreted for access. In addition to taking into consideration major level service budget drivers, we also go through a process to entertain department requests. The 18 cost centers submitted 96 submissions back in the January timeframe. Not all of the requests are approved or included in this budget. There may be some requests that did not make it. There may be some requests that get grant-funded and some that don't get included. The total costs of the requests were 4.1 million with 47.32 FTEs. A big theme through my first year here has been more professional support in classrooms to support students. And so this budget does prioritize student-facing staff in order to accommodate their needs. English-language learner support is predominant in this budget. We have increased staffing for family liaisons, as well as providing additional translation services, as I discussed. Adding instructional leaders in the form of assistant principals across our K-3 elementary schools, which is a fundamental equity response based on some of our K-3 schools having assistant principals and some not. And then we are seeing an increased number of students, young students, kindergarten and first grade, who are not quite school-ready and may not have a preschool experience. And so in responding to the needs of our youngest learners, adding some paraprofessional support there. The next slide is an overall comparison between FY23 and FY24 regarding our foundation budget, state funding, and the required local contribution. I would point out, in terms of our enrollment, we have slightly increased our enrollment, and this is all school-age children in Barnstable, not solely in the Barnstable public schools. But that number has slightly increased, which I think is really important to keep an eye on in the long term. We are projected to maintain our enrollment and stay rather steady, in contrast to most districts, not only on the Cape, but also in the nation, where most districts are expected to decline enrollment in the next decade. The state, through the Student Opportunity Act, has recognized that there are certain costs for districts that are escalating beyond what their formula has traditionally funded. You've heard about the special education, multilingual learners, health insurance costs, guidance and psychology services, as well as services for students who are economically disadvantaged because of our demographic shifts here in Barnstable. That is driving up our foundation budget by 11.84%. And therefore... also drove up Chapter 70 aid coming in from the state by 32 percent, which is one of the largest increases of any municipality in the Commonwealth. And you see the increase of $6 million coming into Barnstable in the form of Chapter 70 aid. Enrollment drives everything in terms of our budget and in terms of how we allocate it, as well as what comes in from the state. This is a graph that we've shown over and over again through the years. And the big contributors to the increase in Chapter 70 has been the increase in our ELs. I've been calling them multilingual learners in order to recognize the assets that they bring in having multi, multiple languages. And also in the percent and number of students who are economically disadvantaged. That combination has largely driven up the monies that we're receiving in the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act is a six-year implementation. This is year three. And I mentioned this in terms of sustainability. There are three more years for implementation. We submitted an initial three-year spending plan in FY21 and have submitted annual reports on that plan. We will submit a new three-year spending plan to DESI in FY24. And the spending plan is the state's way of checking that you are prioritizing the funds towards what they call evidence-based programs to support students and close opportunity and achievement In this budget, we have some enhancements on top of what we would consider level service to leverage the additional funding. And I would, I would note that this is in relationship, the increase is in relationship to the 60-40 revenue sharing split with, with the town in agreement with Town Manager Mark Els. I looked at equitable allocation of resources, noting that there were some discrepancies across the K-3 schools, added assistant principals and paraprofessionals to balance things out, as well as making some shifts in current staffing that we have that is budget-neutral. And district-wide, making sure that we are applying our English language educators and special educators equitably across all of our schools and thinking district-wide to make sure that we're providing equitable services across all of our schools. One of the things that I noted in my entry plan is the need for talent development, making sure that we are recruiting and retaining educators, which is very difficult in this labor market. I know that the town is experiencing many of the same, many of the same things in terms of vacancies in town departments. For the schools, if we have vacancies, what often happens is we then end up contracting out the services at a higher cost. So we are not experiencing the same sort of favorability that the town has in terms of salaries. We have legal obligations to provide certain services. And so our contracted services unfortunately has gone up, and we'd rather have the services provided by people on staff. So that means we need to be more creative about our recruitment, about our retention. That includes things like growth opportunities and succession planning. We've, we've introduced some paraprofessionals, particularly for our English learners, with the idea that having paraprofessionals who are interested in becoming licensed teachers are folks that we can cultivate and grow into the vacancies that currently exist in ESL. Similarly, paraprofessionals in special education. And the assistant principals are introduced with a thought, too, of having some succession planning for senior leadership. Instruction is a huge area of focus, and I'm really excited about some of the future things that are happening as it relates to instruction. The budget does include some curriculum supports in preschool, as well as the assistant principals to provide some additional instructional leadership, coaching and feedback for faculty and staff. Recognizing the escalating costs, but also the needs of maintenance with respect to our facilities, we have added two positions related to facilities, as well as increased the maintenance budget by 10 percent. And we have put into this budget some consulting service, services to help us take our enrollment forecast, as well as our comprehensive facilities analysis report that we had the first presentation on just last week. We'll have two more presentations related to our facilities in order to help us plan into the future regarding our, our future building needs. This is the operating budget summary. Salary and wages going up 8.77 percent. And in the subsequent slides, there's some additional detail of where those salaries lie. Most of them, as I had mentioned, are in very student, student-focused areas, like the paraprofessionals and teachers. An increase in supplies of 4.97 percent, much of that being inflation-driven. Operating and contracted services increasing 3.19 percent for a total sum of 7.79 percent. And the requested allocation is $82,761,867. The proposed funding sources for FY24 are shown on this chart, and the history is also shown on this chart. As in FY23, we are not planning to take any money out of the school savings account for the operating budget. We are seeking an appropriation from the general fund of that figure of $82,761,867. We anticipate just shy of $2.1 million in circuit breaker to be able to apply to the budget. Circuit breaker, as I'm sure the council is aware, but the community may not be aware, is a reimbursement from the state for special education costs that reach a certain threshold. And this budget proposes to use $600,000 of school choice monies. The budget by cost center is on this next slide. And you can see that there are increases for the various 18 cost centers. They're, they align with some of the details that are going to follow on the subsequent slides. I will point out a couple of things in this, in this slide. Maybe not surprisingly, EL is going up most significantly. It is a small budget, but there are a number of positions and curriculum associated with EL to increase their budget by 43.78 percent. You may be surprised that special education is going up very modestly at 2.47 percent. That has to do with a number of students who have aged out of the program. And so kind of overall, that is keeping the special education costs low, which is unique. Many districts are struggling with out-of-district tuitions going into this fiscal year because the, the Operational Services Division approved a 14 percent rate increase for out-of-district tuitions, based on very small increases historically and inflation. But because we had of our students who are out of district, many of them aged out of the program, our special education costs are, are contained to that 2.47 percent increase. These are the increases by DESI function. The administrative percent increase is always one that I think raises people's eyebrows. Those are reflecting the three assistant principals at the K-3 schools, three of the K-3 schools. I would note, I think importantly, that instruction is going up 8.9 percent and people services going up 5.65 percent to demonstrate a focus on supporting students very specifically in those areas. So there are more details on the subsequent slides. These next charts are the additional positions and salaries and wages. And we purposefully broke this out for you so you could see the requests and the recommendation. We are looking to also strategically apply grant funding so that we don't necessarily put all of the needs in the operating budget, but also think strategically about how we're applying our grants to provide services to support, to support children. And so this is broken out by school. I will highlight a few things that I haven't yet talked about. I had noted at the elementary levels, the paraprofessionals and the assistant principals. I will note that at BUE, we are looking to add math and reading interventionists. And although not out of the operating budget, this will help to support close, closing skill gaps that I think are most acute right now. When I walk around and see students in classrooms, I really, I feel grades four, grades five, you can really see skill gaps within those, within those classes. So we're supplementing with some additional interventionists there. At the intermediate school, I want to point out the addition of the world language and STEM teachers. This is intended to expand the elective offerings at BIS with an intention of aligning them with the high school program. So the STEM will be based on Project Lead the Way, and world language does set a nice foundation for world language at the high school. And it is something when I interviewed that students asked me about in terms of what I thought of introducing world language at BIS. So it feels very responsive to student The BIS and BHS is where we're adding ESL paraprofessionals in order to support learners in the classroom. I'll take this opportunity, again, although it's not in the operating budget, to highlight the peer mediator. The peer mediator is currently funded through ESAR. We have seven students who are trained, and hopefully next year it will be more, to help de-escalate conflicts at the high school. They have been trained, not to de-escalate the most serious of conflicts, but those before they get to a serious level. And it is, I think, going very well. Additionally, at the high school, looking to support special education. The ESL department is growing in terms of the number of teachers. It is the only department that does not have a department head. So we're introducing that leadership there. Supporting our multilingual learners with a bilingual counselor. This adds a second bilingual counselor to our counseling team. We have completed a special ed program review of our Crossroads program and are implementing some of the recommendations through this budget with an additional teacher and paraprofessional in order to improve instruction. And the technology department has asked for an inventory clerk, which doesn't sound like much, but I think will be, will pay dividends in terms of return on our investment in tracking and keeping, keeping track of our investment in technology. You see there the craftsman to support trades in maintenance and a district-wide family and community liaison, although there were school-specific family and community liaisons earlier. Terms of operating expenses, we have some curriculum materials funded both through the operating budget and then also through, through the ESAR grant. And that's where the grant-funded ones are, are coming from. I would take this moment to highlight an addition of stipends for athletic coaches. That reflects the additional, two additional sports that we introduced this year, unified basketball and unified track, which is an inclusive model for students with disabilities to serve as, to be athletes and then supported by their peers. The high school next year is going through its accreditation process, so that does come with a one-time cost. That is budgeted for. We're keeping our eye on spending on supplies at the high school and based on a variety of reasons, including inflation, adding to that budget. It talked about translation and interpretation services. Professional development, you'll see in three areas. One is to bolster PD in special education. One is to bolster professional development district-wide related to diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And the other area of professional development that we added is with the assistant superintendent as it relates to curriculum and instruction aligned with our vision of a graduate, which I'm looking forward to sharing more with you and enlisting you in the process of providing input and feedback on that vision. You'll see here some of the cost increases related to transportation, like gas and diesel, and some increases in out-of-district and bus monitors. The last two lines are what we've budgeted for increase in the, increase in maintenance, as well as the, the top two lines. I talked about the consultant for facilities planning. We are organizing our contracts through a contract management software, making sure that we're reducing redundancies in the contracts across the district and making sure we're efficient, efficient there. We are bringing mentor stipends into the operating budget from a grant. Some of the, the assessment line increase is 5 percent based on inflation. Our educators are continuing their own education through courses, and we do have a need, a demonstrated need to increase the budget line for course reimbursement. Licensing costs are going up as a result of inflation. So are testing and assessment supplies. We have a grant that we anticipated was going to expire. That is for the nurse at the Family and Community Engagement Center. That grant has been extended. But in FY25, that position is one that we're going to have to be thinking about. We're increasing our interpreters' budget lines and text and curriculum materials for our English language learners due to enrollment increases. We have some additional changes from reductions from FY23 to FY24, based on one-time expenses that are listed here, both in terms of supplies and salaries and wages. And I look forward to building the FY25 budget with Chris Dwyerly, a fresh set of eyes, looking and identifying and making sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible while making sure that we're meeting our obligations and providing students with what they need. And with that, we'd be happy to take comments and questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Ahern. Looking to my left, Council Mendez, please.
And thank you, Superintendent Ahern. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. You've only been on the job for a year, and I have all the confidence in you, especially as far as the academics go. But the only thing I really wanted to comment tonight is on the maintenance. In order to have a first-class school system, you have to have first-class maintenance. Our grounds are embarrassing. I did a little thing where the past six months I've been driving around to each school. And I don't know if it's Barnstable or Detroit. Potholes, speed bumps, that there's a half a speed bump there. The grounds, especially in Marston's Mills, are in abysmal condition. And I'm all about liability. And I want to protect the town. But also, as I said, in the days we live in, especially with sports tourism, we're leaving a lot of money on the table that the town could be taking in because our fields are terrible and our facilities just aren't good. So going forward, I hope that's going to be something that's concentrated on and kind of paid a little bit more attention to. Like I said, I'm not blaming you. You're in your first year. So I, and I know it's not your fault. But to me, when I have friends who host basketball tournaments that bring down 200, 300, 400 families, and they don't think of Barnstable because of our facilities, it's embarrassing. So that's really my only comment. And I just hope it's something that we improve on in the future.
Would you like to respond to that?
I would love to respond to it. The budget that you see with the two increased personnel and a 10 percent increase is kind of an incremental nod towards the need to look at our facilities and really invest there. Facilities was one of the key priority areas or themes that emerged during my entry process, and I do anticipate... and I do anticipate a real focus there. I did not want to go too far in this budget without having the facilities conditions assessment report and our enrollment forecast to then do some of that data-driven planning and analysis around what would be some good figures to put in, but it will be an area of focus for sure.
Thank you Superintendent Hearn. Thank you. Council Mendez, Council Asselis, please.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Hearn. So a couple of questions. The, the increase at Centerville of 18.57% and BCIS of 15.9, is that related to the assistant principals that you have?
By and large, it is related to the addition of the assistant principals. At Centerville, we are also introducing a social worker. When we looked at equity across our elementary schools, they had fewer kind of student services personnel than BWB, for example, than BCIS as well, West Villages. So those are the big contributing factors there.
Okay. Follow-up. So, thank you for that. As far as assistant principals are concerned in those particular schools, I'm, I don't, is that a new, I always said it's a new, those are new positions that you're requesting, right?
Those are new, yeah.
So can we expect that across the board with the other elementary schools at some, as we move forward?
We already have some assistant principals at the elementary schools. So Hyannis West has a full-time assistant principal, and West Villages and BWB share an assistant principal. And what I think is really noted is that when the assistant principal in those schools isn't there, that absence is really felt. We also note an absence and a lack at BCIS and at Centerville as well in terms of some opportunities that they don't have that exist in some of the other schools. And so this sort of provides one assistant principal to all of the K-3 schools.
Okay. And is there any, I guess, what, what role or what tasks do they take on as assistant principals? You don't have to run through all of them, just give it, if you can, just give some examples.
Sure. I think assistant principals are really wonderful utility players in a school building. They can be a partner with the principal as an instructional leader. They can also deal a lot more with operations, freeing up the principal to be more of an instructional leader. We have students who are dysregulated, who need additional support. They can partner with the counselor. They can be a conduit to families in order to provide supports in that regard. At K-3, you know, we're, we're, there's a lot less discipline at K-3 than there is kind of what you traditionally think about, but they are responding to behaviors. They're helping teach students with respect to lagging skills. And so they're a real utility player. They also are very instrumental into the day-to-day operations of the school. And if they're needed in the cafeteria, they're there, at the bus line, and they really can be an excellent partner for the principals. And I think a lot of this will free the principals up to do more, more development of staff, more instructional leadership. And so those are, those are some of the, the tasks.
Thank you. Two more quick ones?
Please.
And as far as the principal salary, did principal salaries increase as well? Do we anticipate that? I may have missed it, but...
Yeah, so I do anticipate the principal salaries to increase a bit, and we're trying to keep close watch and make sure that people are compensated fairly based on their roles and that there's kind of parity across, across the district.
Okay. Last one. In your recruiting efforts, I know it's challenging finding enough, you know, staff, if you will, to fill the vacancies in the schools. What have, what's been the biggest challenges when you get feedback if you're not getting candidates here? What are maybe the top three things that you're hearing about?
Health insurance comes up in terms of the 50-50 split on health insurance. That is certainly one of the reasons why we've lost candidates. Housing has come up in terms of trying to secure housing. Those are probably the two things that we hear. And then I think there's just too few candidates, in certain key areas, there's just too few candidates and a lot of competition.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Mendez, did you have a follow-up question, sir?
Actually, Nick kind of stole my thunder, but the question I had for you was, do you feel because of the 50-50 healthcare split that we have to pay him more on the back end as far as our salary goes?
I haven't done that analysis. It's a good question, though. You know, I think people are looking at that calculation, they are looking at that calculation. And I know, you know, if I were in a different district and we had something like 70-30, but a lower salary, I would say to the person, "Yeah, but we've got 70-30," and run the numbers, and that's going to mean something to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to my left? Any questions? Looking to my right. Council Snap.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you Superintendent. Very nice, very thorough presentation. Since Council Asselis asked the questions I had about the assistant principals, I'm going to move to some of the other positions that you've been highlighting, which is the family and community liaisons. Could you give us a little bit more information about their job description and what kind of person you're looking for to fill those positions?
Yeah, thank you. So we currently have maybe five or six family and community liaisons in the district. Some are dedicated to certain schools, particularly our larger schools like the high school. And then we have some that are split and shared. Again, this is one of the positions that when they're split and shared and they're not where you need them, you really feel it. You feel that lost opportunity. They are multilingual, so they speak English and Portuguese, English and Spanish, or perhaps they're trilingual, and really serve as an important conduit between our school staff and our families. And, and so that is their primary role. They do complete the initial screening assessment of students when they enroll in the district. There's a language proficiency test that if, on the home language survey, they indicate that there is another language other than English spoken at home, all students automatically get screened. They do the initial screening at the Family Community Engagement Center. They are providing written translations of documents. This is a, they don't do all of our documents. If it's a highly technical document, we would send that out to a translation service. But some of the more routine documents, they will translate, which saves money in the long run because we're not using a more expensive service to complete that translation. They develop really, really nice relationships with families. I think they're, they're getting to know families, they're developing relationships, and really helping communicate between school and families. They attend meetings. So in addition to written interpretation or translation, they do oral interpretation at special education meetings, parent-teacher conferences, disciplinary meetings that come up on a, on a regular basis. So as our multilingual learner population grows, they are really critical assets in terms of communicating and that family engagement.
So if there's a problem with absenteeism, would they be kind of a go-to for that?
Yeah, they could absolutely do some outreach and connect with families to encourage school attendance.
I know that since we're in the sort of post-pandemic, that people now have to re-enroll in mass health.
Yes.
And I know how important it is for our, our students to have adequate health care. Would the family and community liaisons have a role in making sure that that was happening? Or would they help refer people if?
They could help, I think, bring awareness to the idea that people need to re-enroll. The state has provided us with, with translated documents so that we can send out the letters to, to families. But I think sometimes you send something out in an email or in a newsletter that might get lost, and so that personal connection, I think, is really important.
Last question. I, I think most of us probably are, I don't know if the word is surprise, but it, it is amazing to me, the, the kind of steep growth in the ELL population that we've experienced. And is there anything that you have witnessed that kind of speaks to where that, why that trend is occurring?
I think, I mean, I guess I would want to hear from families themselves, but my speculation would be, you know, that, that sense of community. You know, people are identifying a sense of community and, and coming together here in, in Barnstable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Snap. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque, and thank you very much, Superintendent Hearn. There's a slide a few back where it references, and if I recall correctly, it's either budget allocation or funding allocation. That one. And I can see how much of the funding comes from the general fund, but I noticed that in fiscal year, prior years, 19, 20, 21, there were savings that now there are no more. So is that going to be the trend?
So that was savings, not that we kind of invested, but savings that was used to offset the budget, that we're no longer needing to put into the budget, to support the budget at this time. And it could be a trend. You know, certainly every year we have the conversation and we talk about the 60-40 split and we see where the revenues are coming in. But with the Student Opportunity Act being halfway, I do, I would anticipate three more years of some sustained Chapter 70 increases because this is a six-year, a six-year rollout. And that would have an impact on how much, I would think, would have an impact on how much savings we need to be putting towards our operating budget.
If I may?
Please.
Does, does that mean this might be an opportunity to build the savings account?
So as I had mentioned, some of our expenses are coming in higher than we would expect through contracted services, for example. So I don't anticipate having a lot left over for savings in this current fiscal year. We have been building the savings. I want to say it's something, we've been spending a few, a little bit of it down, and there is a request for a supplemental appropriation later for, from the savings, but the savings has been increasing pretty significantly over time compared to where it has historically been.
I have one more, please. And I noticed in your presentation several references to grant funding. So it would benefit me if there was another color that just said where you derived some of your grant funding, because I know you have...
We have about $5 million in grant funding.
Yeah, that, to me, that would show that you're being creative and taking the opportunity to get other sources of income. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clark. While the slide's up, I just had a quick question. I noticed on the school choice that the numbers seem to be increasing. So that's, that's a good sign, I would think, that it's possible to desirable community for students to choose to go here? Is that what that is?
That is, similarly, that's money from the school choice account that is proposed to be used to offset. In terms of our school choice numbers, I, I do think that Barnstable is an attractive community. We are facing some space constraints in terms of accepting school choice students.
Okay. Interesting. Excellent. Okay. Going back this way, Council Shaughnessy.
Thank you, President Levesque. I just have a point of order. Did we read this item into the record?
You're absolutely right. No, we didn't. We didn't. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, the whole thing. We'll get to it. The Council Cullum, did you, Vice President Cullum, did you have any questions?
Questions, comments, the whole nine yards. So I wanted to delay this to this week because we wanted the full complement of counselors, but everyone's protesting because Matt's not as funny as I am, and so we're missing four people. Yeah, he's more cordial, but not as funny. We've already established all this. Anyway, but I do have some, some comments to start. Like, first, I'd like to say that I, I fully appreciate how you've kind of dissected the community and, and looked at the needs of not only the students, but the community, and, and back and forth in each individual school and what's working and what's not working. It's the likes of which we haven't seen since, since we had Dr. Mary, who would, you know, play the shell game and try to make the most of the budget and, and really address the needs, and I appreciate that very much. I also really appreciate how you're working to make the schools center in the community and help the community understand how important the, the schools are to them, because I think that's a, a bridge that we haven't had built for us. And Dr. Mary did start that years ago, but I think probably 90% of my constituents don't know about the 60-40 split and where all their money goes. And I don't think they necessarily see the value in raising strong, confident adults, kids to become adults. And so I think that's a huge opportunity that you can continue to, to capitalize on. I, I've had the opportunity this year to come in contact with and have many conversations with your staff at BHS, and I find them to be exemplary. And I just want, I mean, from baseball coach to, to guidance counselor, to principal, and I, I, it wasn't because I'm a town counselor that they were the way they were. You know, they're just, it was very, it was very heartwarming to see that sort of caring come from people. And I just wanted to mention that publicly, that you have a great staff there. I cannot stress enough how much I think there's an opportunity for us to offer bilingual status to all children that attend Barnstable Public Schools. If we start at an early enough age, and maybe we're talking about, you know, building a feeder program where we're asking parents to get certified to help, you know, help other children learn things, or whether we're sitting people down, kids down in front of the TV like we did during COVID, or the computer during COVID for an hour a day or a half an hour a day, I don't know. But I think if we can offer something different, that's not, that's not even in New Bedford or Fall River, anything that we are, a dual-language learning environment, and we can say, "If your child is willing and able, we will make them bilingual. I don't care if it's Mandarin, Portuguese, whatever," by the time they graduate. I think that's an amazing gift to give a child. And, you know, our family is bilingual. We speak mostly English at home, but we can all function in Spanish, and it opens doors like crazy. And, you know, it's, it's one thing if we're all sitting here talking about how important bilingual people are, but, you know, how many people in the room are bilingual? Right? So it's time to invest in that generation and help them, help them come up. And I think when you do that, it's proven that they make 20 grand more upon graduation. So that's something I think that we could really do to enrich our community more, and I can't stop talking about it because it's really important to me. I do have some questions, like, one random one that I'll start with is, what's happening with band? What's happening with, with programs beyond sports at BHS? Because sports are great for the kids that play sports, but I know drama's really strong. Is there something you could offer about band and what's happening with that?
Sure. I think with, with music in general, one of the areas that I think needs some examination and some building up is in the lower grades. So you asked specifically to the high school, but I think it's, these are like skills and passions that get really cultivated at fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. And from what I've heard, there's maybe some things to look at there with respect to enlisting and recruiting more students and encouraging them to, to, to go into band and chorus and, and cultivate those talents. You know, I've attended some of the musical performances, and I think they, they do a phenomenal job, and I look forward to helping nurture them and, and helping to continue to grow the program because I think it took a hit in the past couple of years.
So currently, are there music programs at the 4-5?
At 4-5, at 6-7, definitely. 4-5, I mean, we have music across all of our schools. I'm thinking specifically around like kind of that differentiation, I think, definitely happens at 6-7. And we, we have different music strands at 4-5 as well.
Yeah. There was a time where, where it was, you know, the glory days for, for Barnstable with, with marching band and everything else. So I hear from a lot of constituents that they'd love to see that programming come back. And I realize there's, you know, I realize the, the hiring issues and everything else, but that's, it's something that people who, who weren't necessarily athletic and gravitated to would love to see kids being taught, you know?
We, we do have a pep band, so the marching band is morphing into a pep band, and I do, I have heard some interest in some area of expanding that next year.
Cool. That's great. I have another question. I just wondered, what, what are the mass regulations for providing social and emotional learning in, in our schools? Are the, is it tied to funding? Are we required to, I mean, I know it's the, it's, I know it's the new thing or whatever, 10 years now, right? But I just wonder what the standards are that we're held to on that. But I just wonder what the standards are that we're held to on that.
Yeah, that's an interesting question that I don't think I've ever had before. There are standards as it relates to guidance, and there's a typical guidance curriculum. And that's been in place for a long time. And you might see students going through particular lessons as it relates to guidance. In terms of councilors, historically, it's been guidance councilors, career councilors, to really think about life beyond high school. And councilors in the school realm, I guess, this is my perspective. Again, this is the first time I've had this question. I think councilors in the school realm have largely been historically there to help students access their education, may have been initially related to students with some emotional disability and helping those children access their education. I think as mental health needs and behavioral health has grown, as people have come to understand more about mental health and behavioral health as a matter, not for a few kids, but for all kids, we've increased and seen the need for more councilors and social emotional supports in schools. I think it's also in response to fewer outside resources. The trend seems to be that more and more things are happening in schools, more expectations are placed on schools. As far as regulations goes, we have the ESBERT screening, which is a substance abuse screener that we're expected to do in schools. It can be done by nurses, it can be done by councilors, but that is one of the expectations and one of the regulations. And I think historically, though, too, as we think about schools, we've always, it's kind of ebbed and flowed, but teaching the whole child. I think back to the beginning of my career, and that was a big focus as MCAS was coming in. Don't forget about the whole child, don't forget about the whole child. So I think, to a certain extent, it's always been there. In terms of being held to account, they are now doing some surveys for students, with students that are tied with the MCAS periodically around school culture, school climate. And it's called the Vocal Survey, and that can give us a window into the overall social emotional climate of the school. I think many educators, though, feel that it's the right thing to do, that we should be focusing on social emotional health of students because the evidence is pretty clear that it impacts and only helps to support their academic learning.
I guess I say it because it's been our experience as a family, not in the high school necessarily, well, maybe a little bit, but in other schools where it's a mandate put on teachers that perhaps they're not prepared for. And so I'm glad to hear that it's like, there's some sort of a survey or whatever out there that we can check the climate of the school because not everyone is prepared to teach children about their social and emotional wellness. And I just think that should be looked at, maybe. I like the idea of just taking a temperature of the school and seeing what's happening and what's not happening because in some cases, there are teachers in fourth grade preparing kids for eighth grade. You know, and they're just thinking about lunch and getting home. And so I just think sometimes it's like, we're deputizing maybe people that aren't prepared for it, or I just think it's something we should look at in the school system as well. The last question I have is something that we've talked about through Mark with you, I think, which is the student safety at Barnstable High School. And I want to make sure, first of all, that we're providing you with all, even though I know this because we've had the conversations, I want to make sure the public understands that we're at the ready to help however we need to help with that, and that we all want our children to have a safe environment to learn in. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that because I got a ton of questions about that and a lot of comments.
Yeah. I guess what I'd like to start with, thank you for asking questions about that because safety is paramount and is number one. I want to first recognize our school resource officers through the Community Police Division. They are amazing. We have three full-time school resource officers and officers that have adopted schools and vice versa, pre-K to 5. And they are outstanding. And I guess what I'd want to convey to the community is, our school resource officers, what I see among them is their investment in children and their development of relationships. And that really shows kind of loud and clear. And having that healthy relationship is one of the foundations around safety. We're working on, speaking of relationships, working on some climate and culture pieces in order to strengthen relationships in the school. We have the peer mediator, which I talked about, which holds a lot of promise. There are some really excellent models, including from Cambridge, Ringe, and Latin. Their peer mediator model is so successful that the peer mediators are now taking their skills outside of the school setting and working in their community to mediate conflicts in the community. So that, I think, holds a lot of promise in terms of de-escalating situations that may arise. We are also introducing a program called the Hope Squad next year. They currently have it in Falmouth, I want to say, but many Cape communities are introducing the Hope Squad, which is related to mental health and peer leaders are trained to kind of recognize warning signs of their classmates and intervene and point each other, point students into appropriate resources. But it's not simply a suicide prevention model. It also addresses other aspects of mental health and builds school culture and creates that more supportive feel. We do have an application to the state right now when we think about physical security. We have an application out to the state right now related to the front entryway. So we have some, and I think the grant will be awarded, we'll know at the end of the month, but $50,000 to create a more secure front entryway with two locked doors and a vestibule that will help secure that front entrance a little bit more. That was some feedback from faculty in terms of a point of vulnerability. An additional piece around that physical security is, I think, that the training that occurred at Barnstable High School among the fire departments, the police department, and there were a couple of us school people there to observe and participate was invaluable to really, it was hard, really, really hard, and emotional and intense, but extremely and extraordinarily valuable to see them in action and very confidence instilling to know what they would do and how they would do it, and just to see their intensity and their commitment. We have been working on calibrating responses to behavior across the administrative team, and that has been under the direction of Principal Friedman and the five associate principals. I think the restructure of that team that happened at the beginning of this year has really helped provide students, there's more associate principals to work with students. And so I think that has been strong, and each of them is tied with a guidance counselor. So those are some of the things that we're doing related to school safety, and we're continuing to work on it. We have a committee of administrators and union representatives to talk about ideas and respond. And I think those are some of the ways in which we're addressing safety at the high school.
That's great. Thank you for the very thorough response. Can we do anything else in the area? Can we provide more for you as a council to help with that? Because it distresses people when there's violence in the school. And it's two seconds, and it's all over YouTube, or face snap, or whatever it is, and there we go. And it's not the PR piece of it that upsets me, it's the safety piece of it. It's the kids are talking, and they deserve to be safe where they're learning, just like we deserve to be safe when we're legislating or working, right? So if there's anything we can do, I hope you know that you can come to us. We all want our kids to be, they're the most important, you know? And then I was asked, this is my final thing, and I'll end with a compliment, I promise, but the final thing was that a mom asked me to mention how unsafe the eighth-grade bathrooms are. And it's terrible. So I really would ask that you take a hard look at that and provide monitors if necessary, even at an extra expense. I know I would support that because, again, the kids do not deserve to be bullied, and it's an awkward time, and everybody's just trying to get through it, you know? I do appreciate everything you do, and I know I'm asking hard questions, but it's because the public deserves to know all the efforts you're putting in and what the real score is. So I know you're planning big things for Barnstable, and I can see that, you know, one of my things was, I can see five years down the road, we're going to be great, but what are we going to do for the kids now? And you answered every single one of those things. So I appreciate your circumspect look and your analysis of the problems and what you're putting forward to solve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. And I would just like to also compliment everything that's going on. Our new athletic director, Steve Centus, I think he's done a great job, been very responsive. It's not easy coming to a big school like this. And people are very ingrained in their community, especially athletic community, so there was very high expectations. To hit the ground running, I just think he's done a great job. And Ms. Marcia has done a fantastic job with the music department at the high school level. Yes, would love to see that trickle down, kids fall in love with music in the earlier grades in the elementary schools because that's really what launches them and be able to find their superpowers in the musical and the arts world. And being one of those kids, quite honestly, and having children like that, the earlier the better, where they can find those confidences and superpowers. And then, but again, back to the high school and everything that's going on there, the band director, and just be able to move forward with something that I believe will grow in their enthusiasm. I got a little tour the other day when I was there for the civics. And I spent a good amount of time talking to the eighth graders and the juniors in regards to the civics project, which is very exciting. I actually liked the fact that there was no presentation, formal presentation, it was just the kids and their projects. And be able to talk to them, bump into some kids that I coached at Little League, and family friends and things of that nature. And then with that, and bumping in on the way out and getting a tour of the band room and the purging that's happening there and trying to upgrade what they're doing and really a full-force effort to try to recruit kids and give them their opportunity to exercise that musical abilities that they have. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I know it's something that I had a passion about, and I spoke with you in the first months of you on the job. You can see these, and again, I think I echo what Madam Vice Chair has said, that the things that I believe that we've suggested, not everything's going to be, the room wasn't built in a day necessarily, but at the same time, you have definitely, with the help of your team, obviously, be able to tackle some of these issues right away and within the first school year. So I can only imagine, and I look forward to seeing what's going to happen and move forward. And so, any other comments, questions? And I know I'm working a little bit backwards, but Council Shaughnessy, if you could please help me just read this, write it in the record and open the public hearing, please.
I would love to, President Levesque. This is an item of old business we've been discussing, which is subject to a public hearing. A roll call, majority vote of the full council. Item number 2023-156, appropriation order in the amount of $82,000, sorry, $82,761,867 for the purpose of funding the town's fiscal year 2024 Barnstable Public School Department budget. And to meet this appropriation, that $82,761,867 be raised from current year revenues as presented to the town council by the town manager, as read.
Second.
First and a second on this item. And obviously, the public hearing is open. We've gotten our rationale, thank you very much. And it says a public hearing. Is anybody in the room like to speak to this item? Do we have anybody that would like to participate remotely? Okay, I would close the public hearing then. And again, not seeing any more council discussion. If we can move to a roll call vote, please.
Counselors. Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Yes, passes nine, thank you.
Great, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thanks for your hard work.
Can I make one? I want to thank you very, very much. You mentioned a team. I did not introduce Assistant Superintendent Kristen Harmon, who is here in the audience. So I just want to be sure to note that she's here tonight, as well as Facilities Director Mike Lambros. Thank you.
Thank you. So noted. Have a great night. Thank you. Council Mendez, if you could please, the next item of old business, item number 2023-194.
Certainly, Mr. President. This is old business, item number 2023-194, appropriation order in the amount of $155,000 for consultant services in support of a local comprehensive plan update. This is referred to a public hearing, roll call, majority vote of the full council.
Second.
First and a second, and we have Director Planning and Development, Elizabeth Jenkins, here to help us with the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, Elizabeth Jenkins. A local comprehensive plan update is a way to interpret the community's vision and the values we seek to protect. It is a way to anticipate, coordinate, and balance policy decisions related to growth and development, infrastructure, the economy, and resource protection. The town last updated its local comprehensive plan in 2010, with much of the research and community outreach occurring earlier. In the years since that update, the town's capital infrastructure plans, identification of housing needs, and other factors have shifted dramatically. The Local Comprehensive Planning Committee, together with the Planning and Development Department staff, is on track to complete the first phase of the local comprehensive plan update. A project that included crafting a narrative of existing conditions, broad community engagement and outreach, and the development of a collective vision statement for our future is near completion. The next Local Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting is next week, and we anticipate that the LCPC will vote on the existing conditions and vision statement, a recommendation to the town council at that meeting. This request is for consultant services to complete the update to the local comprehensive plan. Supported by town staff and in cooperation with the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee, the consultant will assist with the completion of remaining portions of the plan. Those portions include the development of a future land use map and associated narrative addressing geographically the desires of the community for land use, growth, preservation, resource protection, and enhancement for the town of Barnstable and its seven villages. Additionally, this phase will include updates to the other LCP chapters, including natural resources, facilities and infrastructure, economic development, cultural heritage, and design. The proposed scope includes continued community engagement and feedback on the plan, as well as engagement by multiple town departments and community partners. The Local Comprehensive Planning Committee voted at their May 11, 2023, meeting to support this request for funds. This is a one-time expenditure, will not be added to the Planning and Development Department's budget. And I do want to recognize the staff assistants, especially of Assistant Director Kate Maldonado, James Cupford, Senior Planner, and Kyle Pedestini, who have been the Planning and Development Team running key on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins, for the rationale. And this is a public hearing. Is anybody in the public like to speak to this item? Do we have anybody who'd like to participate remotely? Okay. Coming back to the council, I'm going to close the public hearing and pump into the council for council discussion. Any questions in regards to this? Council Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Director Jenkins. Just a quick, kind of estimated timeline of completing Phase One, initiating Phase Two, and completion of Phase Two. When will we be seeing the final product?
Sure. So admittedly, the length of time it took us to do Phase One was longer than anticipated. I do think that was a good thing. The time that we spent was done in really going through an extensive community outreach process, which will continue to inform the plan going forward. Again, we do hope to have essentially a conclusion to Phase One at the June meeting. You know, we want to give them space to get it right. We're going to review public comments that we got on the vision statement and existing conditions and hopefully find consensus around those this month, hopefully with a report back to the council on that process over the summer. We would need to go through a procurement process, and we are looking at composition of the committee as well, at the request of the current chair, to make sure we're meeting the diversity, equity, and inclusion goals that have risen really to the top of a lot of the conversations that we've had. But we would anticipate wanting to commence this project before the end of the summer, probably in August. probably in August. And I'd estimate, you know, probably a year timeframe for completion.
Anybody else in regards to that? And, you know, I know you just mentioned diversity, equity, and inclusion, and, you know, I think it's been discussed at the council level in regards to this. And this is, again, not to put anybody on the spot, yourself obviously included, but just the fact that it is so important, especially to myself, that this be something that reflects our entire community as much as possible. I think there's been a great job done in discussions. You yourself, I know, have, you know, linked with communities that have never necessarily been linked with before, and I appreciate that. I want to recognize that. And I just support continuing those efforts moving forward, that it isn't just the old guard making decisions, that things are changing, they need to change. There is something known as smart growth. It's been discussed at this council level. You know, the collaboration between APC and Housing, and with Hack, and the GrowSmartCapeCod.org, all these different things that deal with infrastructure, housing, and moving forward with that. I just want to make sure, again, discussions we've had, and, but I just want to make sure that the public understands, and especially those under-involved, underrepresented communities, that they hear it from the town council dais, that there is an effort being moved, that they are included, they're appreciated, and they're a big part of our community, and that they need to be represented in this local comprehensive plan. So, anything else?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Again, I close the public hearing, council discussion, and if not seeing any further discussion, roll call majority vote, please. Thank you again for your efforts.
Counselors. Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nine.
Thank you, it's unanimous. Thank you. Assistant Town Clerk, do you need a break by any chance? Let's take a three-minute break real quick and then we'll come right back. Thank you. Counselors, if we can move to the dais so we can move on with the orders of the day, that'd be great. As Madam Vice Chair approaches the dais and settles in, we're going to get back to our meeting. And we're going to begin our first item of new business. And if Counselor Clark, if you could please help me, item number 2023-196.
Of course. Thank you, President Levesque. This is new business, a first reading, and it's referred to a second reading on July 20, 2023. Agenda item 2023-196, amending the administrative code, Chapter 241, Article 3, Multiple Member Appointive Organization, Section 241-44.5, Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee.
Second.
We have first and a second. Again, we're referring this to a public hearing, the next meeting, July 20. Counselors, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Moving on to our next item of new business, Counselor Stein Hilber, please, 2023-198.
197 or 198?
I'm sorry, 197.
This is item 2023-197, amending the administrative code, Chapter 241, Article 3, Multiple Member Appointee Organization, subchapter 241-38A, Hyannis Water Board. I'd like to refer this item to a second read on July 20, 2023, as written.
Second.
We have first and a second, and referring to a hearing on July 20, 2023. Counselors, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Madam Vice Chair, if you could please, item number 2023-198.
Yes, item 2023-198, resolve approving Mark S. Els's outside employment with Cape Cod Community College. This may be acted upon with a roll call majority vote.
We have first and a second. And who would be doing the rationale on this one? Yes, I believe so. Attorney Karen Nobur, please.
Good evening, Counselors. Karen Nobur. This item is regarding the town manager's outside employment. His employment contract with the town requires that he obtain town council approval before he engages in outside employment in the town, and this would allow him to continue teaching at the college.
Thank you, Town Attorney Karen Nobur, and for the rationale. Any council discussion in regards to this item? Okay, not seeing any. Move to a roll call majority vote, please.
Cullum.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzlis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Nine yes, that's unanimous. Excellent, thank you for that. And once again, happy birthday. Moving forward to the next item of new business, Madam Vice Chair, please, item number 2023-199.
This is item 2023-199, referring to a public hearing on 7/20/2023, amending the code of the town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 183, to remove the income limitations from the eligibility requirements for the senior and veteran's property tax work-off abatement programs, as written.
Second.
We have first and a second, and referring to a public hearing. Counselors, if you could raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that is unanimous. Counselor Atzlis, please, item number 2023-200.
This is an item of new business, number 2023-200, appropriation order in the amount of $3,500,000 for the portable classrooms at Barnstable Community Innovation School and Hyannis West Elementary School, referring to a public hearing on July 20, 2023.
Second.
We have first and a second, and moving that to a public hearing on July 20. And Counselors, if you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that is unanimous. Counselor Schnep, please, item number 2023-201.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, requiring a first reading and a refer to a second reading on 7/20/23. This is item number 2023-201, appointments to a board committee or commission. Resolve that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee commission. Councilman Aging John Jope as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. Human Services Committee Jennifer Hinckley Needham as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. Recreation Commission Tony LaPola as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. And Zoning Board of Appeals Larry Hurwitz as an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2025.
Second.
First and a second, referring to a public hearing at the next meeting on July 20. What's that? Oh, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, second reading, sorry. And so at this point in time, Counselors, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying, what's wrong? Anything wrong? Counselor Shaughnessy? Oh, okay.
Counselor second.
Oh.
I don't know if the time has passed, but given the length of time between this meeting and our July meeting, consideration of suspending the council... Excuse me.
You might have to say it again.
Sorry. Given the length of time between this, the first reading and the proposed second reading in late July, and the need of these committees for these members sooner than that, and the terms usually beginning on July 1st, there was a request to suspend the rules, the town council rules, to approve these tonight, just these appointments, not the next group.
Next, that's the next round. Okay. Was there a second in regards to? So this is, we're voting on suspending the rule. Okay, Counselors, you ready? Okay, so if you could raise it. No, we didn't. I, we, I got stopped. I got a funny look on this side. I never thought that I was going to get any questions in regards to that, so it wasn't just something we discussed prior to the meeting. So, so anyway, now that we have a second on suspending the rule, do I need to do a roll call on that? Okay, I think so. So if, Counselors, if you could signify your approval by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
So the rule has been suspended, so now we're voting on the item as amended. So again, Counselors, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Okay, what's that? Very good. So that has passed, and moving forward with that, those people are appointed. Counselor Schnep, if you could please read the next item, 2023-202. I'm sorry? I don't think we're going to suspend the rule on this one. Thank you, though. Counselor Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an, I'm of new business. This is the first reading with a refer to a second reading on 7/20/2023. Item number 2023-202, reappointments to a board committee or commission. The town council reappoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Comprehensive Financial Advisory Board Wendy Solomon as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee Alyssa Crowley as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Douglas Payson as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Shelfish Committee Patricia Farina as a member holding a family permit to a term expiring 6/30/2026. Zoning Board of Appeals Denise Thorne Johnson as an associate member to a term expiring 6/20/26. Mark Hanson as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2026.
Second.
We have first and a second, again, referring to a second reading, excuse me, July 20, 2023. And Counselors, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That has passed. Counselor Shaughnessy, please, if you could, item number 2023-203.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is new business being referred to a public hearing on 7/20/2023. Item number 2023-203, amending the code of the town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 168, Section 168-5, to conform to Chapter D of the Code of the Cape Cod Commission Regulations of General Application, as read.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Counselors, if you could please raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That has passed. Counselor Mendez, please, if you could, item number 2023-204.
Certainly, President Levesque. This is new business, item number 2023-204, should be referred to a second, a second reading on 7/20/23. Order authorizing the town manager to negotiate and execute a 99-year lease with the trustee of the Parker Lombard Trust for the building known as the West Barnstable Train Station and the land on which it is located.
Second.
First and a second. And Counselors, if you could raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving this item forward, thank you. Next item of new business, Counselor Stein Hilber, please, 2023-205.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2023-205, order authorizing the taking of road easements by eminent domain for sewer and water purposes over certain private roads in Centerville and Hyannis known as Sunrise Road, Lower Road, Aurora Avenue, Quocket Avenue, Gregoire Circle, portion of Midway Drive, Dacey Drive, Crestview Circle, Regatta Drive, and Crosby Road. I'd like to refer this to a second reading on July 20, 23, as written.
Second.
First and a second. Again, Counselors, if you could help me out by raising your hand and signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That item has moved unanimously. That item is moved unanimously. Counselor Clark, please, if you could, item number 2023-206.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. This is new business to be referred to a public hearing on July 20th, 2023. Agenda item 2023-206, appropriation order in the amount of $195,000 for the purpose of acquiring by purchase or eminent domain a five-year temporary construction easement and a permanent easement for shared use path, sewer, and water purposes in land abutting Bursys Way with an address of 1174 Pitcher's Way, Hyannis, Mass., owned by Windmill Square LLC.
Second.
First and a second. Councillors, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
That item is moved. And moving on to our last item of new business, Counselor Schnep, please, 2023-207.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business that may be acted upon by a majority vote. Item number 2023-207, resolution authorizing the flying and displaying of flags at town hall and at other town properties to commemorate state and federal holidays.
Second.
We have first and a second, and we have Town Attorney Karen Nobre here for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, Karen Nobre. About a year ago, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled against the city of Boston after the city had denied a religious group the ability to fly its flag on City Hall Plaza. The court found that the city had not limited the use of its flag poles to government speech, but had instead created a public forum open to all public private voices, private voices. Traditional public forums where speech is protected under the First Amendment are streets, sidewalks, and parks, but public forums can also be created. Reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions are appropriate for a public forum, but restrictions cannot be based on the content or viewpoint of the speech. Government speech, however, is not subject to the First Amendment, and the governmental entity generally can say or not say whatever it wants. In the Boston case, the Supreme Court looked at several factors, including how the particular means had traditionally been used to communicate, who would the message be attributed to, and the level of control that the city exercised over the message. The city of Boston did not have a written policy, and its practice had been to essentially allow all requests from private groups to use City Hall Plaza to raise their flags. The court's conclusion that this was not government speech was based on the city's, quote, "lack of meaningful involvement in the selection of flags or the crafting of their messages," unquote. But the court did say that the city could change its policy going forward, and in response, the city of Boston adopted an ordinance which specifically states that the city's flag poles are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression of the public and which requires a city council resolution or mayoral proclamation prior to a flag raising. In addition, the ordinance requires that the city take ownership of all flags that are displayed. So the Town of Barnstable currently does not have a flag policy or an ordinance regarding flags on town property. And that being the case, the agenda item before you has been narrowly tailored to authorize, in addition to the flags traditionally flown by the town, the flying of flags to commemorate state and federal holidays. The proposed vote makes clear that this is government speech and that the town's flag poles are not a public forum for private expression. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you for that rationale and for the precedent that was set. I think that's important and gives some context, so thank you for that. Any counsel discussion? Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you. So, my question is, we have a flag pole here at town hall. Do we have other flag poles at other town halls, schools?
We do have other flag poles.
Okay.
And that's what I think, in the vote itself, I referenced those other. I didn't reference every site where they are, but I referenced the flags that we fly.
Okay. So Juneteenth is on Monday?
Yes.
Do the schools have, do the schools have flags for Monday? Or do we have one flag for Monday? Or are we set for Monday?
So a request has been made to fly the Juneteenth flag at town hall?
Right.
And a flag is being procured for that purpose?
Okay.
If approved.
Okay. I'm just sort of thinking forward next year, thank you.
I believe there was something, and maybe it was in the Boston City Council ordinance, that the town would need to take ownership of any flag that was flown.
And I have that in ours as well.
That's in ours, okay, so whatever...
Because, again, you're maintaining control over your own message.
So if approved and if there is a flag procured, it will be handed over to the town?
And just to clarify that a little bit more, take it a step further, we're authorizing the town manager to decide which flag poles these flags will fly on. So we're doing that. It will fly, but where exactly? I mean, that's up to the town manager. So just, again, for the public, to understand where the authority lies, we're authorizing the town manager to make a choice. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a comment, question?
I do. We need to get you in the party wagon a little earlier, because Juneteenth is Monday.
Yeah, I know.
Anyways.
Any other questions to my right? To my right. Look to my left, Counselor Steinheber, please.
Thank you. When you say traditional flags, I assume you're talking about Town of Barnstable, State of Massachusetts, POW flags, and the American flag?
Yes, that's what I referenced in the vote itself, yes.
Why wouldn't we just have that as our flag policy? Why would we expand beyond that?
It's a policy choice. It's up to you. It's, again, it's government speech, and it's a decision to be made by the council. But Counselor Schnep had asked if we could have a resolution that would authorize the flying of the Juneteenth flag, and so to do that, I thought it would make sense to authorize the flags to commemorate all state and federal holidays as opposed to picking just one, but you certainly can make whatever changes.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see that changed, but I would suggest that, you know, we stick with what we've traditionally done. I think once you start stepping out of that, you start opening the door into issues you don't want to be dealing with. And doesn't matter what holiday it is, there's nothing with Juneteenth or any holiday, but I think once you kind of go out of that narrow definition of what we've traditionally done, then you didn't do it for this holiday, you did it for this holiday, you did it for this group, you didn't do it for that group. I just don't think we need to be introducing a possible issue for ourselves down the road. I think it should be narrowly tailored to what we've traditionally done, so I would vote no, as it's written.
Counselor Axelus, please.
So I would ask, I guess, moving forward, should this be, say this is passed, what will, who or what will trigger which flags will be flown? In other words, will it be by request that a flag be flown for a certain national holiday? Or are we going to be proactive and do it ourselves? Are we going to be reactive and wait for someone to come to us? Or, so I'm just curious how that would work?
I think we could do it either way. I think we can make that decision ourselves, we could see if someone comes to us, but this is what would be authorized by the council if that's what you vote.
Because I was just, again, because my thought was if we, as a town, if we didn't proactively say, okay, we're going to fly, you know, a flag for each holiday, and if for some reason a particular flag isn't flown, could that open us up for criticism that, well, you flew that flag last year, why, you know, why aren't you flying ours this year? So I guess I just wanted, I just wanted to understand what the process would be for making those decisions.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, this does not set out that internal process. This basically authorizes, as President Levesque said, does not direct, but authorizes the town manager to make these decisions within the context of this vote.
Counselor Mendez, please.
Yeah, I just find it hilariously funny that one person's tradition is another person's tragedy. I can bring 10 people in here that will look at that flag, I may not agree with it, but not like it, and feel offended that that flag flies. This isn't 1945 anymore, or 1965 anymore, or anything like that. We are in a society now that has to be more inclusive because the society isn't what it used to be. If we're going to get offended, or people are going to get offended by a flag that's flying that they may not agree with, then don't look at it. I don't like everything that flies, I just don't look at it. Just because I may not agree with something doesn't mean it's not, doesn't mean it's wrong. I just won't go to the ceremony, or I won't look at it. So I think this is a good thing because it's inclusive. It's inclusive of not only me, or Tracy, or Matt, it's inclusive of other people who pay taxes in this town, who have every right in the world to have their stuff out there. They pay taxes too. You may not agree with it, but they pay taxes too. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Counselor Mendez.
I just want to make it clear, I was asking about process, I certainly wasn't talking about what's right or what's wrong, I was just asking about a process, so let's make that clear. I'm not saying it's a wrong flag or the right flag, I'm just asking about process, so, you know, just want to make that clear, thank you.
Just clarify something, too, and just, again, somebody initiated the conversation, approached Counselor Schnep, just again, to give the order of events in regard to the specific flag. Counselor Schnep approached myself, leadership, to have a conversation. I asked Town Manager Els to look into it, he forwarded it to Attorney Karen Nobre to see how possibly we could work this in, in a way that, again, this is a federal holiday. This isn't just a, any old flag, so to speak, and this is something, and not every federal holiday actually has a flag. Again, I've been kind of doing my research, what is the official Juneteenth flag? All these types of things that I went and, you know, again, I can reach out to Lynn myself and have conversations and find out what they've done already at the Zion Church. They have what they consider to be, and I'm not quite sure yet exactly what it is, because I was waiting confirmation on that, but I do know that we will have something in place if this does happen. But again, this isn't, you know, this isn't going to remedy anything that people feel in regard, so I don't, I don't believe this should be politicized necessarily, but it's something that, again, this is a federal holiday, it's something we celebrate as a nation, so if that's the case, then it should be, it's worthy of, again, it's not going to, you know, have placement on our flag poles, it's not going to supplant our American flag or the traditional flags that are there, they'll just be in addition to, so. Counselor Steinheber, please.
Yeah, again, I just want to reiterate, it's not about any particular holiday, this could be resolution for a Christmas flag, that doesn't matter. This isn't a political thing, it seems like it's evolving into a political thing, so again, that's now getting kind of anti what you're trying to do here, not political speech. I'm just talking about are we setting a precedent where you're going to increase the likelihood of criticism? That's all I'm saying. We've had a narrowly focused flag policy, not officially written, but I always think of what's the next thing to happen? So it's not a holiday thing, it's not a political thing, it's just a process thing of are we opening the door up to more criticism that we really just don't need to be, you know, dealing with or spending time on? That's all.
Counselor Mendez, please.
Again, this isn't casting the spurnses on anybody out here, I just found it an interesting conversation, to be honest with you. So, for instance...
Make sure I can hear you in the mic, sir.
Oh, for instance, there's a Thanksgiving flag, so are we not going to fly it because it offends the natives? Are we not going to do that?
I don't know. Yeah, and that's kind of, I think that's...
I'm just saying, as an example.
Right.
And criticism, who really cares? Seriously? Who cares? We get criticism for everything we do. I doubt a lot of people are going to criticize us for a flag.
I just think it's, right, I guess it's a concern over, does this open up a Pandora's box? And I would say, no, it doesn't, because we're very concise, and it's something that's well thought out, and very specific to a federal and state holiday, so I believe that. If we stay, we can stay in those constraints safely and move forward, and, you know, and really include and recognize something that's already been put in place by our federal government. Vice Chair, and did you, back to, oh, Counselor Shawnasty, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
I just want to point out that, to me, this is a proactive step, because the whole reason the city of Boston got into trouble was because they did not have a well-laid-out flag ordinance, so I think, you know, getting out ahead of it and setting that in place, limiting it to state and federal policies, I think is good then.
Thank you, Counselor Shawnasty. Madam Vice Chair.
Move the question.
Now we have to vote on moving the question?
Yep, you do.
Okay? So we're moving the question, so...
Second.
Second, I'm moving the question, so now we are voting on moving the question. All those in favor of moving the questions, raise your hand, signify saying aye? Okay, so now we vote, and I missed that, do we? No, it is not a roll call, so councillors, please, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any against? That would be eight to one. Thank you very much for the rationale and your work on that, thank you very much. All right, that is our last item of new business, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
First and second, please, councillors, if you could, raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody, thank you so much.